Alright guys, it's six o'clock, let's get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we got everybody here tonight but David again, we're gonna have to put a picture of his face here on the chair so he can just kinda remember what he looks like. Alright, moving along. Okay, so we have the regular agenda to look at here. Brent, you wanted to make a couple of changes on here?
That would be under consent, so.
Okay, you're right.
Next one.
And we're gonna keep everything else the same, we talked about that. Okay. You guys got anything you wanna add or change on there? I think that's, I think it's good, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay, so there's a motion, Brian is a second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, yep, then we get to the consent agenda. You want one thing on there changed, right?
Yeah, before we take action on this one, it'd be to table or remove the last item under consent, so water, sewer, storm, and street improvement district number twenty eighteen dash three, Tara Gardens Progressive Estimate number one. The bond is not in place yet, therefore I would not recommend that you approve a change order to where clock starts ticking for payment if we don't have the bond in place today.
Right, okay.
That should be in place here fairly soon, probably within next week or two, is that fair to say, Lucas?
I'll talk to John, the numbers are just revised, so.
Yeah, but not today, so.
Yeah, but we did find a way to reduce the numbers a little bit in that bond, and that's why there was a delay.
Okay. Jack was probably happy about that, so he's not complaining too much.
He's very happy that we worked it out.
Okay. Alright, so with that change, anybody got anything else on here? Assuming you guys have looked through that, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with one removal.
So moved.
Hey, Brian, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion approved. City council minutes from last time around, you guys have any questions on that? Looked good to me, but a couple of their eyes are good.
I didn't notice anything.
So, nobody noticed anything on the place here, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the minutes as they're presented.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Okay, Chelsea has a motion, Brian is a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on to public comment. I'll whoop on the floor to anybody, anybody got anything they wanna chit chat about? Okay, we'll move right along then, Jesse, it's, you're up. You got all good news for us tonight, right?
Yeah, it was a good month, actually.
Awesome, see, it's all getting better.
Oh yeah, sixty-two calls for service in August, there's one crash, no reckless driving, one juvenile complaint, three animal calls, two alcohol-related offenses, it was two DUIs. One was north of town, county seventeen and seventy-sixth avenue south, and the other one was Main Street wall happening. And then one medical, sixteen citations, twenty-seven warnings, no parking tickets, no drug-related offenses. Five traffic complaints and thirteen calls where deputies attempting warrants. Nothing notable this month, there weren't any thefts or anything like that, there's still a couple frauds and stuff, but nothing that seemed to be out of the ordinary. Been doing some extra patrol around those new crosswalks by the school and haven't noticed anything, everybody seems to be, I mean, everybody seems to be going.
Has it slowed any traffic down, fewer people speeding along there, or has not changed behavior much?
Um, it actually, um, I don't know, I mean, it hasn't really been bad there all summer, from what I've noticed. We haven't been stopping near as many vehicles there before the crosswalk was even there, and we haven't stopped a bunch since we've been patrolling there the last week or so, so it's been pretty good, actually. I sent out an email last week to try and get one of the speed trailers set up there, if you guys remember the last time, then we can, we can get kind of like a gauge on what vehicles are coming in at, what speeds and stuff like that, so might be kind of a good, good time for that.
Probably would hurt to do that again, just so we can see if there's a comparison from last year to this year, did they slow down?
Yep.
Are you noticing that more people are using the crosswalk to get across there, or?
Yeah, there has been quite a few people from the school coming over at lunchtime, like some of the staff and stuff coming over for lunch and stuff like that.
So Casey's loving it, then.
That's kinda been.
I just noticed a lot of people who ride their bikes and so forth and using that crosswalk, so I'm like, this is a safe place to cross.
I know, I talked to some of them and they said prior to having that crosswalk, they would just like take the ditch and then just cross like wherever, you know, but so it's kinda nice having that one designated spot for them to cross, so. Yeah, other than that, it was just, we had the Knights United again in August, it was another good turnout for us, everything went well. Big thank you to everybody that helped out with all the businesses and organizations in the city and stuff like that, and the church.
We gotta get you a sign next year, so when people drive by, they know what's going on, a lot of people say, what's going on over there, it's like, okay, there was, there was write-ups about it, but still, you know, even the one sign just to let them know that something's going on there, and put it up a week ahead of time, so, but we can work out that one for next year. But I think too, everybody that I talked to really enjoyed the event and had a good time there.
We tried to move it to the south side of the church rather than the east side this year.
You had the exposure, yep, yep. I know, it was all good, and I think that went over well.
Yeah.
So your sixty-two calls, you had five calls related to traffic complaints.
Yes. Yeah, that's actually, that's pretty much right on par from where we usually are, might actually be down a little bit. The traffic complaints can be anything from somebody that, you know, maybe somebody drove off the road, or somebody calls in a car that's just parked on the side of the road. Then we'll go and check on those, or if we come across a vehicle that's just parked on the side of the road, then we'll check on them too. Sometimes it's people that break down on County Route seventeen or something, so that's part of those too, but nothing really uncommon there.
Do you guys have run into anything odd with the Johnny Holmes band back in August, did you, I mean, as far as that evening goes, there was nothing unusual that went on there?
Um, no, I think.
It sounds like we had a lot of people in town, that's why I was just curious if there was anything that out of the ordinary for a street dance, you know, like that.
I think it was actually pretty good, from as far as I heard, there wasn't any like major issues. I think the two DUIs that we had were, might have been somewhere around that time, or at least one of them. There wasn't anything, I mean, I heard that there was like fifteen hundred people that came through.
Right, that's, because I know that's more people than we've had in a long time, that's why, I mean, I heard it went over fairly well, and that's why I was just making sure, seeing what your guys' perception of that was too.
Yeah, we had no, no issues with all the people in town, there was, we had staff that were there at the Johnny Holmes concert too. I think that they had told a couple people to leave during the concert, but, I mean, that's kind of to be expected too, so. But nothing out of the ordinary as far as in town or anything, it actually went pretty well.
Good, yeah, no, it sounded like everybody had a good time too, so it was good.
It was a good event.
You guys got any questions?
Do you guys, have you heard anything about any vehicles in the parade?
Yeah, I was gonna talk to you about that, last year we had a squad car in the parade, we could do that again this year. Unless you have any other recommendations for any other vehicles or anything like that?
I mean, whatever you got that the kids would like to see, I think the swap was maybe out in there last year.
Yeah, we had the Bearcat in there last year, I can check with Captain John or to see if we can make that available. I'll find out for you this week and let you know, send an email or something.
If you got horns blowing once, kids love that. Some adults do too. Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, Brent, you got the planner service agreement.
The planner service agreement is basically an extension of planning services with Interstate Engineering for their, well, I would label it as current planning assistance. Current plan would be like subdivision review, anything that you're seeing on a day-to-day basis type planning. They're, they've done a great job helping the city out, and they're willing to continue, they're willing to continue helping the city with basically like on-call planning services. This is a transition. The goal is to transition when we do fill the community development director, then the community development director role, and this would start transitioning out to where this would phase out over time, after we're comfortable with the community development director being up to speed on everything going on. So, it gives them kind of that extra support of, this is how we've been proceeding with the different tasks, like development reviews and everything like that. So, what we're looking for is just basically a continuation of this agreement through June of twenty nineteen.
We need to have the city planner services, so I mean, that's.
And the estimate, the dollar figure estimate was fifty thousand here, but that's very dependent, as you know, depending on.
How often?
What we get hit with for development reviews or anything.
Yep.
If it's going how we anticipate it could hit us, then we're going to be hit with more development reviews, more of these situations, and their costs may be higher. It may be lower, so it's hard to tell exactly what it would be.
But that's a good ballpark to work with based upon.
Yeah, it's a reasonable ballpark to work with.
You guys got any questions on this one, it's just pretty much cut and dry, we need the service, he's been doing, Brent's been doing a real good job with this.
It's be done.
So, I'll entertain a motion to accept that proposal.
So moved.
Okay, John does, give me a second, Brian does a second, okay, all in favor say aye. Alright. Okay, Brian, okay. Okay, number nine.
Number nine, this is your favorite one. This is more just an update, I do not have a transition agree, or plan to present tonight, has been trying to get a hold of Mr. Vander Vic. I have not been successful in getting in touch with him. So, what the plan, our plan is, is to, I will work directly with Lucas to draft the transition plan, and Mr. Vander Vic's participation in the milestones is going to probably be minimal, and he'll be given those milestones to achieve. And if he cannot achieve them, then we'll be back with the code enforcement angle again, and saying he failed to comply. If that is the case, hopefully we don't go there.
Need to fall back.
However, we do have some other areas that we would address in regards to code enforcement if we have to come back with code enforcement, so. We'll keep you posted, we have that transition plan, I hate to be saying this is the point we're at, we're, but nobody could say we're not trying to work with them. He has made progress cleaning up the property, I do wanna remind people of that, progress has been made, but it's about eighty percent complete.
Yep.
And we need to.
Push that twenty percent.
So, we're hopeful that he could achieve that, follow through with what he's said he would do, and put the issue in the past, that is our goal.
So, you and Lucas can work that through then.
Yep, and I just touched base with Lucas beforehand, so we should be good there.
Alright. Onto the next one, I suppose, compost site, number ten.
Do you have documents for you?
I put, I put together a little PowerPoint.
This one?
Yep. I know, I'm getting fancy on you. Just a quick overview of where we left off, what we're trying to do is find a solution for the compost site, get it out of the road right away. Make it to where it's a site that we can actually expand on in the future as usage occurs. So if we find out it's heavily used, we could expand it, but we don't wanna go in all in without seeing that participation from the community. Because you could invest a lot into a compost site and have very little return from the community. Overall, big picture, we're on track of, if we go forward with what's being proposed tonight, and what you approved at the last council meeting, we're gonna be right in that fifty to sixty thousand dollar range, putting funds into compost site. So it's a substantial investment, we could easily put another fifty to a hundred thousand into this, but that's why we'd hate to push that until we actually know it's there, the participation is there, and we could phase it into the improvements are appropriate where they are. The main focus on this is grass clippings, leaves, branches, we're not taking a bunch of other stuff, and this also gives us a means to hopefully at least control that a little bit. If there's abuse on it, we're able to control the access to where folks can't even get into the compost site without going during certain hours. And if they do, if they do dump illegally, then we could come back and address that through ordinances or with Cass County Sheriff.
Sheriff, okay.
Like I mentioned, phase one is getting out of the roadway, debris, grass clippings, controlled access. Phase two is really the focus of improving security, improving access, if we were to proceed with the Eighth Street truck route, then we could have access coming from the south too. So you could have your loop system come from Park Avenue, go down, enter it, and then exit out Eighth Street or vice versa. And that's part of why we picked the location we did, expand operations, and then also the overall goal is to reduce long-term expenses. Right now, we're at the Will of Waste Management for our expenses, and this will help reduce our costs or control them, and we hopefully won't be filling dumpsters with branches that could either be burnt or chipped, and we could really be focusing on grass clippings or things that can be put in there.
Right.
In the future, we can mulch it up or put it in for compost and actually get material to get to your residents or park board or city use, so. We got an excellent there. Progress to date, we have more accurate estimates, following through from our conversation last meeting. You see a proposed site, and we have talked, we spoke with the contractor today, the type was at a hundred ten feet, it's a hundred feet by a hundred twenty feet. They're looking about two weeks out of being able to start building that.
Okay.
Just a reminder, council approved this pad, it'd be a crushed out, or a rock for concrete pad, a hundred feet by a hundred twenty feet with access road, you approved that at the last council meeting, and you used sales tax funds to pay for that. The remainder part, this is the part that we left off at, was to get better estimates for fencing signage. The walk-up stands, that was probably the most concerned to the council, so we have some cost estimates on that, we also found out that we do not have to have that structurally rated, which saves quite a bit on the cost. So, you're looking at the walk-up stands, the ballpark around four to five thousand dollars, so I said five thousand dollars each. We've seeked out some cost estimates, if we were to build that walk-up stand internally, we could see cost savings also, but I'd rather show you the higher number, and then we can figure out how we're going to proceed internally on that. Signage, under two thousand dollars, in fencing, under twenty-five hundred. That fencing is basically regrouding bar-bar fence, putting new bar-bar fence around there, gates, and anchoring corner posts. So, we'd be doing improvements quite a bit there. And then the additional pavement, what you see there, it'd be concrete, they'll go under the dumpsters, we'd have, if we do a forty by forty pad, we'd put three dumpsters. But the two walk-up stands, so you have dumpster, stand, dumpster, stand, dumpster. And we'd have three spots, we'd only have two dumpsters probably, but then when one, an empty one comes in, they drop it in the empty bay and then pick up one of the full dumpsters. So we could cycle them that way. But that should be a pad big enough to put all the dumpsters on a concrete pad, that way the trucks aren't ripping up that rock. They could really tear that up if we don't have something more stable to support them. The concrete pad would probably be elevated on top of the hundred foot by a hundred twenty foot, so we'd have a little bit like a ramp or something to lead up to it. But then, we could use that base to do the concrete later on if we wanna expand the concrete pad in the future. So that's the logic behind there. If we have cost savings, we'd put a tail road in, basically just a little road on twenty foot wide by a hundred foot long, leading south out of that concrete, out of the pad area, this gives us an area to be able to dump branches off on the side, so the branches don't take up the whole area that is used for dropping off materials, and so. But if we don't have the cost savings, if we're running close on our budget, we wouldn't do that, that could be something incorporated later on, next year, is perhaps like end-year expense or at a later date, whenever we'd see phase two would be an option to implement. Go to the next one here. Just just a reminder to show you the logistics of what the site location would look like. So if you, you see the location where we'd put it, council did ask that we, I know at the last meeting you were wanting to proceed with that second road, that second access road.
That's right here.
Yep, I would not recommend you do that right away, let's see how the use is going, because that'd be about fifteen thousand dollars. If you'd like us to do it still, we can, however, that's an easy item to add on later, or in the future, if we see the demand for it.
Brent, would that be something to maybe go back and do concrete on the other road at some growth time if it's?
Over time.
Maybe that's the time to do it, redo the whole thing and make it more permanent?
Yeah, and like I said, just trying to phase us into it so we could see where the usage is, and it's a lot easier to adapt the site before, you know, without going all in on concrete.
That makes sense.
Yep. But we could put a gate at that location, just not have an access road, so in the future we could put the road there pretty easy. Because a gate only costs a hundred dollars to put in. I really do see this as being a loop system going down to Eighth if the truck route was to happen.
Yeah.
So I think we'd just, I think we'd be, we'd put, we'd be putting fifteen thousand dollars towards something that's not going to be used hardly at all.
Eighth Street, where is that, right here?
If you scroll down, it'd be south of that shed, those sheds there, so it'd be, it's off the map.
Right, you're saying the loop would come down south, but this proposed route would come all the way through here to the south?
Yes. Yep, so you could come in on Eighth and go out.
So we still have a loop to the north, still have a loop to the north, but then we could have a loop to the south as well.
If you want to, or you could just have, you come in one way out the other, or whatever. But I don't think you're, we're gonna have the demand to where that road is so heavily used that we can't
Right.
cycle people in and out. But that could also be implemented in phase two. These are lists of just a few areas that if funds are available, we could do, like I said, the additional road, the tail road, and added cameras, cameras are in phase two, but we could add them if we have cost savings, we could put that in earlier.
That would probably be the highest priority, of those three items, that would be the highest priority.
Now, the cameras number is just an estimate, there are many different ways, as you probably know, how you could wire cameras in, you could do a wireless one, or you could do a hardwired one. So, until we really are seeing how the site is functioning and what we need to do, we're just looking at our options on that one. So, so that's just a ballpark estimate, but it's not, we haven't got quotes on that. So, I'm just depicting my previous experience with cameras for that number. What we're recommending is to just continue with budget, the budget amounts in our general fund budget, not tap into the sales tax anymore, because we're gonna have other needs for the sales tax funds coming up very soon. We have projects like Seventy-Sixth Street coming up, that one, we're gonna have to find funding sources, and that's, the sales tax could be a perfect area to help with that project. Or other improvements throughout the city. Also, we're going to be visiting the solid waste fee in regards to a new contract that's going to be proposed from Waste Management, and that would be a perfect time to look into what is that rate, and should there be a little bit that goes towards composting activities, so you have a general operating budget for it, so it's a little more self-sustaining. Currently, with our current number of residents that, you know, have trash service, we have roughly nine hundred fifty people. Come early, by spring next year, or early summer next year, we're probably gonna be about a thousand customers for trash service, so if you look at, say we charge a dollar a month for that, it would be a thousand dollars a month, so twelve thousand a year. That doesn't sound like a lot, but it helps offset the cost of maintaining that or doing other improvements to it. The whole goal is to make it self-sufficient, not depending on other sources, so that is why I'm suggesting we don't tap into sales tax revenue anymore until we need to, just because of other needs and because we have the funds, budgeted and general fund.
I'd say right now, just to do the phase one, go see where that goes, if we got some extra cash left over, I'd say the cameras would probably be the first thing to take a look at. That's just logical. And then we can see how it gets implemented and used and things like that, and then we can see if we need to add in more.
Yep.
Now, we'll phase it in if we need to, but this'll get us within budget, and we'll be okay, so.
Since it is budgeted, it's already in the budget, I don't believe you need an action, is that?
I'd have a motion.
But it doesn't hurt to have a motion.
Didn't you approve the base bid last meeting?
You already did the base bid, that's why you're not seeing the base bid right now. All you're seeing, Brian, if you go back up a couple slides to that breakout of the costs, really this is what you're seeing, it'd be covered for, using general fund, the budgeted amount in general fund, which is twenty-five thousand, for fencing, signage, walk-up stand, additional pavement.
That basically gets everything that we need.
Yes.
Which is, that's awesome that we were able to get that. So we're basically coming in to half of what we had approved, so that's, that's just goodness.
Yep.
So, then I need to entertain a motion here.
Motion to accept the phase one.
Motion to approve the phase one expenses for the compost.
Okay, Brian does a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
John does a second. We're spending money, have any roll call this one?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
When in doubt, do it.
Okay, all roll call, John?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion carries, alright.
There you go.
Lucas, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, the first item I have is a preliminary plat, a public hearing for Bisto's Industrial Third Edition. This one should sound familiar because the council has already approved the rezon, this is one that was, this is kinda like a rezon that'd be done for the plat, and in a way the plat was done for the rezon.
Can we?
Right.
Is that this one?
Yep. So, this should look familiar, you have seen it before, I said it was.
You don't have pretty colors on here, come on.
It's the color that disappeared, I hit the wrong button.
That's why you said it looked familiar without the color, I guess.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
So you'll notice on this one, the council had directed the developer to include commercial under this property, it's the one that's along a hundred. So, there's, commercial is basically the smaller rectangles, and the larger rectangles are the industrial zone properties. And the Planning Commission had a public hearing at their last meeting, last Tuesday, I believe. Was their public hearing, they recommended approval of the preliminary plat, and then there's some items that still need to be addressed, obviously before the final plat gets approved, those items would be, they still need, the Planning Commission would still like a recommendation letter from the Park District on either payment in lieu of or land dedication, which that would then go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission would then make a recommendation to the city council. So that's one thing, two, a landscape plan, because there is commercial involved in this plat, there's a requirement for a landscape plan before the final plat is approved.
Yep.
And then I did put on the agenda with the Cass, Southeast Cass Water Resource District, to discuss this plat because it's so close to Drain Twenty-Seven, and they have authority over Drain Twenty-Seven, so just to get their blessing to say, you know, this is gonna be near Drain Twenty-Seven, do you have any issues with it? If so, let's address them now before this thing is actually designed. Emergency services, there's gonna be a discussion on that, I'm not sure if the city planner is going to discuss that with them, or if city staff would want to, and that's basically just discussing with the fire department or.
Make sure you've got the road right.
Yeah, you know, is, do you have the proper access that you need to get the temporary turnarounds or anything like that? And then the last thing that we'll still need is either a developer's agreement or an improvement district agreement, and that will depend on who is paying for the infrastructure. And that will depend on who is paying for the infrastructure in this development. And you might have input on that.
The developer has solicited quotes on his own based on preliminary plans. Nothing has been approved. And he has not indicated if he wants to do it privately or publicly yet. I think it's going to depend on the costs.
The numbers he gets back, right?
Correct. Yes. So, um, nothing has been finalized with plans for water sewer because.
All right.
You don't do five plans until the plat has been approved. So it's premature, so.
And so my office will hold off on, on drafting that because there's no point in working on that yet if you don't even know what type of event it will be.
No, I got, I got you. I'm just, yeah. All right.
So those are my, my initial comments.
Has there been any discussion on that from the developer? In terms of, are they, their intention is to connect the city waters? Well, this is Casper Water.
Well, it's, it's, it's city forest water provided by Casper. They're a bulk user. The city is the bulk user to Casper to supply the water. It's within your service area. It's within the city forest service area. So this would be a continuation of the first and the second additions, which are serviced. They're customers of the city, but serviced by the, by Casper.
Casper Water, right.
And then the intent from the planer, from the planner and the city is for this to be on a municipal sewer, not on something. And it's a, it's within the city limits. It should be.
That's their intention. It's just a matter of how we would get sewer services out there.
And installed, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause right now the land does not have sewer services.
Correct.
But it's possible that we can use existing infrastructure.
There is a possibility of that, yeah.
And it's fairly close to that.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm wondering about that, but we, again, we can get to that after we get past all this, but still, that's something too that. Is that, Jim, I was going to ask you, the water pipe that they did bring down there, was that going to be enough water? Could we, to service it or do we, is there another?
There are, um, it depends on what goes in the industrial parts. If there's a large water user, it definitely changes versus a shop or something along that nature. Uh, the intent would be, from what I understand it right now, is to install a standard six inch line through there. And feed it with a three right now, but when the city expands, the system's south where it can be, it'll be tied in with, um, six or eight inch water means.
Yes, Russell.
I want to check to make sure, but I believe that our zoning regulations prohibit large water users.
Okay.
In industrial.
Well, is there, there definitions of what that large water usage is? Okay, you just said large.
You'll know it when you see it, okay?
Ah, yes.
After they've rolled their stuff in.
Right.
Does that prohibit us from opportunity though?
You can look at it any way you want. I'm just fine with the regulations. Those are changeable, aren't they? You just have to make sure you can supply it.
Well, that's why we're having this conversation because I don't know how much, but anyway, that, that'll come down. I suppose that should, before we get too far, I suppose I should open up the public hearing on this, right, Lucas?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll open up the public hearing on the preliminary plat here. Maybe he's got any comments. Be honest, it's already been said, I guess.
One of the comments I'd like to make, if you saw where Drain Twenty Seven was. And if you saw the, those light blue lines right here, that's our setback lines.
Kelly?
To our regulations, zoning regulations for setbacks from, uh, riverbanks. And in case, it's also written to include drain, the, uh, the bank of the.
So unless they do something to mitigate this corner, they would have to do something to raise this area.
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that that blue area precludes any kind, anything done.
This area, you're saying this area.
The shaded area.
Yes, the shaded area is, is due to the zoning regulations that we had a few years back. Then all the developments next to rivers and includes the drains, we have, we have.
Specific setback.
Specific setback.
So I guess that, so the question is, does this setback, we that qualification?
Well, that's us.
Okay, you guys already assessed that.
We're just, we're just, this is like a new one.
Is there a setback with the hundred year flood mark?
There, there has, this has zero to do with flood.
Um, well, you have the line on there. I know Fargo, we can't build on that, like into that mark.
You can't build, you can't build in this area at all. In, in that blue area, you.
No, I mean, the, yeah, the hundred year flood.
You're saying in this little, little finger that comes out here?
No, that's just a contour line.
So as long as they build it up and somehow mitigate that risk, that it, it all decide determines whether they have to carry a budget. That's something.
That setback has zero to do with anything having to do with flooding. It has everything to do with preserving waterways and keeping banks from falling in and having to buy outs.
Yeah, I guess I'm talking about that other jagged line.
That's just.
Yeah, well, it says hundred year flood elevation. So that would be, is that FEMA's?
Yeah.
Like I think Fargo can't build into that one. But I don't know where it's at.
Oh, yeah, they have, they have to, uh.
Into the hundred.
When you start to, you start to deferments. Uh, a lot of these areas, the water life in order to have to build it up in contrast to.
Cause we already had that issue with Terragarden, right? Terragarden has some areas that are in that lower area.
They're within the point zero two percent. So they're, but it's, Terragarden isn't in the flood, isn't in the flood plain. And I'm not sure that this is either. I'd have to look a little more into that, but it's typically is when you're building in the flood plain that that. That elevation is held to.
Yeah, like in Fargo, like FEMA's hundred year flood line, you can't build anything into that.
Right. And the city of Horace, you have to be two and a half feet above the base blood elevation. So.
Lucas, go.
Chairman, sorry, is this what you're referring to? Uh, so it's in the actual industrial districts, um, under land use? Because of the limitation of water resources, no water consumptive industry is permitted in Horace?
Yes.
So like a chemical company or something, that couldn't be there. It's something like to that effect.
Yes.
I guess you just have to watch what, what kind of company it is.
Sure.
Although, as the city engineer pointed out, C H S across the street probably uses quite a bit of water.
All in our perspective, right?
They're bringing the.
Yeah, I know. Their grandfather grandfathered in, right? Yeah. Yep. So. All right. Any other comments from the public on this? Otherwise I'll close the public hearing and we can still have more conversation.
I was just going to ask about the required landscape plan. Does the individual lots have to have a landscape plan as well? Do they have to have a landscape plan for development or?
The, for the individual lots, uh, they'll have a plan, but for like boulevards and stuff. Commercial will have to have like boulevard trees. So that can be addressed with the developer's landscape plan.
One of the things we're going to be looking at is, oh, well, this is a main funeral fair in the city. We're going to want to make it look nice.
Yeah, it's going to have to look nice.
Do I have the ordinance that any commercial has to go through review for the aesthetics?
It's commercial and industrial, isn't it?
And, and of course, we don't want to get into the situation of a bunch of rental buildings that we don't know what kind of business is going in.
Right.
And the transition from one tenant to another.
So in, in regard to that, that comment and just the, the overall, the landscape plan and then that, um, building review with commercial and industrial. I think there needs to be a meeting with the, the chairman of the planning commission, the code administrator, the city administrator and myself to discuss. What is that process and who should be, uh, reviewing that and what needs to be said and when?
Because this is going to happen again, probably more from a couple of their instances.
Correct. And the code administrator called me today asking about the, the landscape ordinance too. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page because it does impact his duties.
This sets the precedent.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a new ordinance.
Where do streetlights fit in?
Streetlights are part of the, uh, the planning process.
Why I think our whole big concern here is the lack of commercial, retail, industrial land we have. And what's the best use of it? And that's where I think we really have to do our due diligence working with, uh, Vistos. And helping them bring in business that'll be beneficial to both of us. I, I definitely don't want to get that ball going down the hill that all of a sudden we've, we've got a huge area out there with a bunch of steel buildings. I know that's just not acceptable. I think there's too many opportunities out there that.
Well, just, just the location.
Exactly.
If I'm going to have any luck.
Yep, a hundred percent, so.
Yeah, it'll affect home values and a lot of different things.
So, what do you guys think? You want to approve the preliminary plat? Comments, questions?
I may, I saw the notes here on the staff recommended conditions for approval.
Yep.
I think we need to follow those.
I agree. I mean, that's, that's why they go through this process.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to close the, the public hearing?
I did, you did. You were writing.
Asking partner in crime here and he said he didn't.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Trying to stay in sync with you, Lucas.
You're ahead of me.
All right. So if somebody else has any other questions, I'm going to accept the motion to accept the preliminary plat as it is.
There is some more work we can do down the line. I would make the motion to approve the preliminary plat with the staff recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second. Oh, you're second, all right.
Chelsea got the second, so all in favor, say aye.
Just one comment and discussion. We, a hundred percent good with all the Drain Twenty Seven, the flooding, nothing we need to put in or.
It's addressed on there, on the plat, so that'll get recorded. And then on top of that, it's on Southeast Cass's agenda. So if they have any issues too, that's why I wanted to do it with the preliminaries. But if they do have issues, let's get it fixed now.
Right. They, they meet next week, right?
Yeah, they meet next Tuesday.
So we'll get a, get word from them before we come forward with final plat approval here.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, good. Next up, Lucas.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next one I have is a, um, a hearing to confirm the assessment list for Street Improvement District two thousand and fifteen dash three. And, uh, Jim, if you will explain that project, I will hand out the list.
Two thousand and fifteen dash three was the paving of Seventy Third Street, south of Fifty Second Avenue. This was a project that was requested by the residents via petition. It was constructed in, uh, two thousand and sixteen. And it's now through the, through the, uh, assessment process, so. Uh, this one, the assessment was based upon, yeah, I believe we went with each, did we not, Lucas?
Each because that was the, they all had the same type of access rights to this one.
Correct. So.
Okay.
So as, as far as that goes, when we bring these improvement district, uh, these assessments to the district, once you, or once the city council directs the levy of assessments. We then take that number and say, okay, special assessment commission, here's the amount, uh, or here's the cost of the project. And then here is a list of those that are benefited from that project. And then based on that, how should those assessments be levied to, uh, those that are benefited by the project? And, um, you can do it by front footage, you can do it by square footage of the lots, you can do it by per connection or, uh, per lot. The, the easiest way to do it, the commission thought on this one was just, um, per lot. Because like I said, everybody's getting the same access to this, this street. It's kind of, is it a cul-de-sac?
It is.
Yeah.
It is a cul-de-sac.
And so, um, they had the hearing, it was published in the newspaper, uh, gets published twice, this list gets published twice. Then there's another hearing, um, in front of the special assessment commission where anyone that disagrees with their assessment can then protest that. There was no one present at that hearing, uh, so there were no objections to that list. Then that list, again, gets published in the paper, um, gets published once. And then the city council cannot have a hearing, uh, like tonight's hearing until fifteen days after that publication. So we are now at that stage. These, this process is, is quite lengthy. Um, and like I said, here we are now. This is the list that was approved by the special assessment commission, confirmed by the spec, uh, special assessment commission. And no objections were made. And no, uh, to my knowledge, no, uh, objections were filed with the city auditor to present tonight.
Right. I mean, they were kind of the ones that wanted to do this and they stacked the numbers where, I mean, this is pretty much cut and dried on this one. Because this is what they wanted to have happen, so. Do we need to do a vote on this one then, Lucas?
It's, it's just a, a motion to confirm the special assessment list.
Okay, so I'll accept the motion to confirm it. Okay. Okay, Brian does a motion. We get a second? Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I said that was a.
So now that's, the city auditor will now file that with the county auditor and then it gets assessed out. And then people get to see it under controls. So, um, same song and dance for the next one, Water and Sanitary Sewer Improvement District, uh, two thousand and sixteen dash two. Jim, if you'd like to explain this project.
Two thousand and sixteen dash two was the extension of Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Main from, along Liberty Drive. From basically east of the, west of the railroad tracks, west to three quarters of the way to County Road Seventeen. This provided service for the, uh, five lots in Arrowood Second Subdivision. And this provides the opportunity for the area north of Liberty to be developed as Arrowood Third Subdivision. This project, like I said, included water mains and services to the south side, sanitary sewer main and services to the south side. Patching, patching of the road and, uh, seeding of the grass.
Hunting for water lines and sewer lines.
There was some, uh, yeah, there was some, uh, yeah.
It has built and has assigned.
Yeah.
So I'm a little confused here. So there's one lot that's taking the majority of the cost? Is that how I read this?
There is, there is, uh, how many lots are there up there?
Thirty-one, I believe, uh, are proposed for that development.
Are proposed for this development?
That's on the north side of the road, right?
That's on the north side of the road. That is, what is it, eight, nine acres?
Um.
Okay, so. But this project opened up the potential for that development and that development is upwards of, I think it's twenty, twenty-four.
That's the one Joel's looking at, right?
Yep, yep, yep. It's Arrowood, it's Arrowood, sorry. So, so all the properties south of Liberty got a one water and one sewer assessment. Whereas the north side, this allows the opportunity for his development to take place, so.
Yep.
It's nine point, nine point eight one acres for that one.
That's twenty-four lots?
I had thirty.
Thirty-one.
I had thirty-one. Here I have thirty-three.
Roughly thirty lots. Okay, yeah.
Cause he had, he had met with, uh, city staff already to discuss that.
He's come in for his preliminary application and, um.
Ah, here it is. So if you want to see the proposed plat of Arrowood Third Edition, I have it here.
I don't, we're not, we're not debating that. I have no interest in that.
That's how we came up with the number that goes, that's associated with that.
It was just essentially to see that number slip that way so that it was just.
Here's the issue. If you take three hundred and ten thousand dollars, I think that's the total for this one, and just divide it by six lots.
Right.
It's just, it's astronomical and it's, it would make the news.
Right.
For sure. So this was the way to allocate that benefit, um, to all those, or allocate the assessment to all those that were benefited.
Right.
And with that new development.
There were, there were discussions with their, with their developer when this was being done. It's a different developer on the south side of the road. And he had thought about doing it privately and asked the developer on the north side or the owner of the land on the north side if he would want to do it privately. And he said, I would prefer to do it through special assessments and spread the cost out over time. So that's where this project went to special assessments. So they were both involved.
They came together.
They, yeah.
Yeah.
The point is, this is going to probably expedite the development of that chunk of land as soon as they're going to get assessed and some of them sold.
What, not getting too deep in here, but what are the size of lots on the south side?
On the south side, they're roughly a little bit more than a quarter acre, point three is.
So basically the same size that will be on the north side?
Uh, what was the ones on the north side? So these are around nine thou, oh, they're close to ten thousand square feet for most of them, so, close to that.
Don't worry, you're good to go.
Alright.
Have a good night.
I thought it was seven.
It just switched to six recently.
That's all J D and Karim days are in, or good?
I'll probably reach out to you later, Kelly, tomorrow.
Okay, back to our regularly scheduled programming.
I don't really see any reason.
And again, there are no objections at, at the hearings.
Yeah.
I was just relating the size of lots from the north and the south relatively the same, is they proportion out the same in the cost?
Right.
Being fair, straight across the board.
Yeah. The only thing is, if he would change up that plat. And we have no reason to believe he's not, he came in for a pre-application meeting and has actually changed it, he's got one less lot, I think it's one less lot than when he originally thought about doing this a couple of years ago, so. I mean, it's in the ballpark.
And there was no protest, you said?
No.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the.
Accept it, okay.
Brian, alright, she does second motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Alright. So, next. Brenton, you want to talk about our trip?
Oh, I think it'd probably be best to tag team.
I figured the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, where's the PowerPoint?
I, I put all the effort into the complex PowerPoint.
Alright, alright.
Yeah, some people's counsel should tell you.
Yeah. Later on. Overall, the North Dakota Leaders White House Conference, uh, Cory and I attended that last week and it was states of North Dakota, South Dakota, and Wyoming present. Wyoming and North Dakota were pretty well represented, South Dakota only had a few people. There were county commissioners, mayors, city administrators, um.
Couple of sheriffs.
Couple sheriffs, not many, and then even a couple of state legislators from South Dakota. North Dakota and Wyoming, I don't recall seeing any legislators there. Uh, they really gave, the, the federal staff gave in a high, a high level update. On occasion, they would get into the weeds, uh, but fairly high level update on various areas, uh, they created a.
Step back for a moment and give a little, what is the purpose of the White House conference, what was the, what was the reason that it even exists or happens?
Yep, well, what the, what the Trump administration is trying to do is engage local leaders more. And they're taking a lot of pride in not leaving questions unanswered. So if you, if we submit a question or we're running into a hurdle, they claim they will respond. That is something that they were really pushing very hard and really trying to build a rapport with some local officials, uh, at all the various levels of government. Uh, that was really the main push of it. And then to give an update of some specific areas they thought were most applicable to our states. So they bundled this with Wyoming and South Dakota and, and North Dakota as a whole, because they felt our issues are very similar. Uh, they talked about coal mining a little bit, they talked, they had somebody from Fish and Game, uh, those were really more applicable to the counties. Unfortunately for EPA, they brought a air quality person, which really doesn't apply to our states much. Water issues, they got, they got grilled on water issues and they couldn't answer those questions, so, uh, they did get stumped on that. Uh, the most interesting speakers, in my opinion, were actually the ones, uh, the, we met the secretary for labor, Alexander Acosta. And he was very good to hear about the different things that the feds are doing, uh, uh, labor law issue, labor issues. Uh, one of the biggest takeaways I got from it is they're looking at, uh, as of September first, uh, employers can participate in insurance plans with other like businesses. So if you're in industry and you only have ten employees, you can join up for a plan, like a co-op type approach for health insurance, which you weren't able to do before. And you could cross state lines.
State boundaries, that was.
Those were the two, those were the two really big takeaways from labor, uh, and it's understanding too that there were, uh, at the North Dakota level, they're working on, can municipalities team up together? So like Horace team up with some of the other smaller cities around North Dakota.
Or like through the League of Cities, that whole conglomeration get together.
Yeah.
That's what they're trying to do and, and so you can pool resources like that, which is a great idea.
Get, and get most bang for your buck.
Yep.
Because like for us, for health insurance, we have to shop it on our own. We can, we don't get the benefits like Fargo or West Fargo that have more than fifty employees, so they get a cheaper rate on their insurance. So that's where, if we're able to bundle it in with other communities, then we may be able to get better rates. So that was, like I said, those were what I saw as the most beneficial. And then the other area that was probably the absolute most beneficial was, uh, they gave us key contacts at each department, federal level, to where if we have issues or concerns or questions, we're able to engage somebody directly. Not get a runaround, not have to guess who to get a hold of. So we're going up, higher up on the federal government chain for communication right off the bat. We're not having to go to the local office all the time to get an answer. Or if we're in a roadblock from, you know, trying to get response from the more local side for federal government representatives, then we have somebody we could jump to right away to escalate it, which is a resource local governments haven't really had, or at least most of them don't. Uh, so they gave us a list of who we could contact for all different things. And I know Cory spoke with the person that really helped orchestrate it all this together.
Yeah.
And there may be more of these type of conferences in the future where they're engaging more isolated groups. So I know they were talking about doing like a, uh, female mayors type conference. They bring female mayors across the country together because they tackle different challenges. Uh, but then also do they do just like a mayor municipal side? Not bringing the counties in because our issues are a little different than what the counties are, right?
We have some dovetailing, but yeah, there's enough different.
Yeah.
And I talked with Zach Michaels, his fellow's name, I also emailed him this morning, got back with me in about fifteen minutes. And then, cause I had some questions about some labor issues that we were talking about. And he actually put me in contact with the assistant, uh, labor secretary. So we'll have some conversations with them too about that. The other thing, I'll just, following up with what Brenton was talking about, one of the things we talked about, uh, the transportation undersecretary came out and was chit-chatting with us. And he's, he basically started right off with, uh, you know, we're talking about roads, but then he got into drones and, uh, the technology that's going on with that, autonomous vehicles. North Dakota is a hotbed for that, he acknowledged that almost right away. But that is where a lot of testing is going on, we're like, what, one of ten centers?
Yes.
But I mean, we're really.
One of ten sites, but we have.
We've got almost like primary focus.
North Dakota has like the Cadillac of all drone sites.
Yep.
So the Grand Forks Air Force Base is, has the, the cream of the crop, the one everybody wants.
Yeah, and they really want to continue that relationship. So they, they're really engaged with the state, especially with the Fargo area on this, and they want to continue. So, um, again, there were some others interests that got brought up too, but one of the big things we talked about too is a partnership, between public, private, and working with like tech centers, trying to help alleviate some of the labor shortage issues. Uh, getting the kids involved in the trades as opposed to all, always going to a four-year. That was a theme that they got, you know, that, and then the other thing they talked about too is that tech centers need to be careful that they're not teaching obsolete technology. Because that's something that they've run into, is that these tech centers all look fine and well. Yeah, and they get outdated because they're not getting tight enough with businesses, so the businesses don't keep them updated as to what their trend lines are. Okay, so it's a two-way street, but that's something that they were talking about in Labor Department, is trying to work that angle now so that we could start getting things motion, things can move fast enough so something doesn't get obsolete, so the kids aren't learning updated technology and they get sent to the wild and there's nothing for them. But that's something that they're focusing on. We're thinking about, you know, there's a talk about a tech center in the metro area here, maybe there's something more that can happen because of that, anyway.
You mentioned, you mentioned tech centers too, they're trying to stress that it's okay to not go get a four-year degree.
That was, they're trying to emphasize that.
They're trying to stress that to the youth, saying, you know, four-year degrees are good and yes, some should go do that, but, you know, there is that demand for those tech degrees or two-year degrees and things like that.
Was to get us or as a municipality or county connected with the right connections, it wasn't just all about money, right?
No.
Figuring out, you know, there, there wasn't really saying, hey, here's pots of money that you can go spend, but, uh, you know, it was about.
This is all about connections, to be honest with you, and to be able, like where he said, we can go from here straight to Washington with an email. Like I said, I got one back in fifteen minutes.
So how are they, how are they gonna come back, how do you ask that question and it be applicable to what we're doing? You know, what we're trying to do as a city, right? Cause what they're do, go, what they're trying to accomplish at a federal level is vastly different from what we're trying to accomplish at a city.
Right, I'd say, you know, directly, I'm not sure if there will be, but there'll be some indirect things that'll come from this. But then one of the things that they talked about, and, and I think three of them brought this up, was about regulations. There's a lot of regulations that they were trying to get rid of. Because they, they're over, some of them are obsolete for one thing, and then some of them are just overbearing. So what they're trying to do right now, I think it was the one time they were talking about every new regulation that came on, they were gonna sunset five. What they were telling us was they were up to twenty-two now, sunsetting.
Really? For every new one, they're sunsetting twenty-two regulations, their goal is to sunset two for every new one. So they're far exceeding their expectations on it, but aren't they able to sustain it?
No, but that's what they were telling us, that there's something that we run into that it, that we feel is an overburdened regulation that we're running into as a municipality, we can bring it up, and whether anything comes of it or not, I'm sure other municipalities have to bring it forward as well, but it's something.
And that's where they can, they can have that visibility across all the.
Correct.
Areas so that we can say, hey, we're not alone, here's a program that's, you know, we can throw your hat in the ring to provide input on X, Y, Z, wherever it is.
And some of the stuff might be that there's some federal grant money or federal loan money, that there's obstacles that we run into. Yeah, I don't know, just, there's a plethora of things that come from this, yeah.
I, I, I think another side benefit of this was, I think they were trying to build local government, you know, county and municipalities, their comfort level interacting with the federal level. Because a lot of folks go, this is DC, they feel as, you can't engage them at all. And I think they were trying to indirectly tackle that comfort level a little bit. Because if you look at who was in the room, uh, from, from North Dakota, for example, uh, Minot, Dickinson wasn't able to make it, but they were going to, uh, Grand Forks.
Rugby.
Rugby, West Fargo.
Devils Lake.
And Devils Lake. So you didn't have all the big cities, you had some of the smaller ones and ones that may have issues at times. But they would never reach out to that level of government if they didn't have that opportunity to engage and know that they'd be listened to a little bit, so.
But I thought it was a productive afternoon, you know, the, the afternoon seemed to go by pretty quick. I mean, they kept things rotating, I think there were ten or twelve, ten or eleven speakers that came in and then they had to wrap up. You know, the closer came in and wrapped it up and put it all together for us, but. They moved things along, got, we were able to ask questions, uh, not too long, maybe get three or four questions in and then they rotate. But we got some of the heavy questions out, you know, and that was good, so.
That's cool. And then the highest level person, the two highest level people that came and spoke were, uh, Alexandra Acosta, he was probably the highest level from cabinet side. Well, he was the only cabinet member that spoke. And then, uh, Kellyanne Conway came in and talked about the opioid crisis, did her spiel about that, so. Um, those are the two highest level people that we met during that, so.
We got to wave at green, we got to wave at green one when it went by, right in front of us. Nobody waved back though, I mean, on the road.
They're planning to continue this event?
They, they claim that they're going to continue doing these, they've reached out to thirty-four states now, uh.
They want to try and get them all here by the end of the year.
Before, they're saying October, they're planning on, talking with everybody, um, so before the legislative session starts. And then, uh, they plan on break, breaking this out, like I said, the female mayors deal was one area and then municipality side, just the mayors or municipalities did, re- reach out to the, to the, to those groups again.
Right.
Uh, because they're saying that the municipalities are having some issues that aren't really addressed as much in these overall meetings, but they're still being consistent. I believe they just started introducing the municipalities about halfway through.
Yep.
There are thirties, thirty-four states they've hit up already, so. Yep.
That's cool. Very interesting.
Yeah, so we'll see, we'll probably see that stuff happen more often, engagement with the federal level more often. And just building up those connections, uh, engagements, and then even localized or statewide, you know, building some rapport connections with some of those, you know, like the other cities from North Dakota, for example, or, uh, Wyoming, Wyoming were ones that talked to us a little bit. Uh, we got, talked with the mayor of Sundance, Wyoming a few times and kinda glad we don't have their headaches.
Nope.
Cause they have to deal with the Bureau of Land Management, Fish and Game a lot on their issues, cause they're resort type areas and federal lands, so, yeah.
Yeah. Every state has a different set of issues that.
We're, we're going to get horse recognized on that more.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, when we were, I mean, how did we get, how did horse get invited to that list?
I didn't ask him that, we were talking more about the labor shortage issues and stuff like that.
They mainly targeted communities, or some of the, kinda like the top twenty communities, population wise, is my understanding.
Yeah, I think they spun a wheel, to be honest.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I mean, you think about it, who's, who's got the growth, right, that's gonna be happening, so we're part of that, part of that effort, so that's great.
So. Alright, we'll move along here to the water meter installation update. Who wants to start that one? Jim, you wanna take that start?
I certainly can.
We'll let you lead it.
Water meter installation has begun, to, as of last Friday, they had approximately a hundred and eight meters installed. Make sure I get the numbers right here. Approximately a hundred and eight meters have been installed, um, there is still a long lead time on the goat shut-off meters, so those are kinda gonna be, once they get the pipeline and we get a little better idea when they can be produced, we'll have a better idea value when those will be here to be installed. Uh, the contractor did stop by the office today and indicated he is having trouble locating people, let, to let them into their house homes. It's, um, some people have been so much as to say that they will not get into their house. There have been somewhere at the, uh, they've been trying to drive around town and if they see some activity, they knock on doors to try to get into the homes. Uh, they've reached out, knocked on doors, he said, they've encouraged people to contact them via their website. He's had their secretary, he's been calling people, anybody that they can get information for, so they're trying to do it. There's still a little bit of, oh, I don't know. Hopefully that, this letter that was sent out last Thursday, people, people were gone for the weekend, that they got it either today or tomorrow and they'll turn around and schedule their meeting replacement with the city, so, um, I think Brenton.
Cause we'll have to.
Brenton's gonna talk with Brian and maybe some, talk internally a little bit about what can be done to help facilitate some of this and, um.
I think the letter's gonna go a long way, so I think, you know, let's give it, give it a week or so, hopefully we'll get some activity that way.
Yeah.
They, they are pretty anxious, they didn't feel like there was a whole lot of response from the letter. However, I stressed him and said, the letter went out right before Labor Day weekend. Obviously, most people are not going to respond Labor Day weekend.
I just got mine today.
Yeah.
Oh, see, yeah.
So, yeah, so some people aren't gonna respond until this week and because they just didn't know about it.
Right. I'd say by next Monday, let's see where we're at with it, by that time, everybody should have digested that letter and been able to start calling.
We, we may send, like how one of our public works staff, one of our staff members from Public Works go out. Uh, you know, that might be a recognizable face or something, or they see a city horse truck, uh, with the contractor. We may try a few of those different approaches, uh, but I'd prefer we go with what I would label as the soft approaches still for now. Uh, we may have to talk about, um, upping the max water charge to incentivize folks, or if there's a way to implement like a, a penalty or something like that to where they get the new meter installed, then they will be paying more for their bill. Because right now, uh, there isn't much incentive to a resident to get these new meters put in.
Right.
But if the max water bill is, you know, significantly higher, I'm not even going to throw a number out, but let's say it's significantly higher. But let's say it's significantly higher, uh, they're gonna wanna get that meter add.
Right.
They're, they're gonna want that new meter, so they could get paid, or they could pay for it.
That or, you know, I hate to go that far too, but even like a water shut-off, if we have to get to that point where we gotta get them changed. I mean, I don't wanna go there, but I'm not, we're not gonna stay here till December waiting for it either.
We'll, we'll see how many properties we're dealing with at that time.
Yep.
Uh, we're hoping that we could, you know, encourage them.
Yep, agreed. I mean, everything else but.
And they can see the benefit of it.
Yep.
And if they don't see the benefit of it, then, you know, hopefully we're not having to address, we're only having to address a handful of properties, not.
Correct.
Not over half.
Yeah, we'll see where. They are starting to get the commercial water meters now.
Yeah.
Do this week or next week, and they said that they're gonna line up businesses to get, get with them when they've got that. Um, you know, he's talked to some up in the north side, our office, he can get into our office and.
Okay.
And that, um, if it, if everything goes well, he said it's been taking them ten, fifteen minutes. I mean, they get in, lock down, and get it done. And he said a lot of people are surprised with how quickly it is. He said, we're just here to replace the meter and, and do that, we're not here to do anything else. He said there has been some people who have maybe thought of it as a scam, and they're trying to get in their house for, see what they've got or something along those lines.
And it's okay to be cautious, I get it, but we've got the letters now, and those guys have the letters with them, I believe, cause that's one was stuck on our door when we were gone as well, so.
Yeah, so he said it's a real quick process and, and it's like in ten, fifteen minutes if everything is, they can just unfold it and. The valves holder, like that sometimes maybe takes a little longer, but.
Yep.
It's pretty, pretty, uh, pretty quick and painless.
So, is there any update on the lead times? Has there been any supply issues at this point?
Nope, I have nothing more to report as far as that concerned. There's some stuff, paperwork that the city has to fill out that came late last week and to facilitate some of that, but. No, I don't have anything.
Remote, they're, they're still in order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lead time has not changed.
No.
I was worried about land lead time on the special order.
Oh, getting longer. I haven't heard that yet, but.
Okay, alright.
You're supposed to be optimistic.
I haven't, shorter. I haven't not heard it either, so.
Okay, well.
Fifty.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern is all, for some reason, hopefully another hurricane doesn't hit. All of a sudden the supply chain gets stopped and, yeah.
Hey, knock it off the negative ways, will you?
Sorry, I'm just, just making a note, anything that can go wrong will and does.
So, you better knock on wood, please, cause there is a hurricane.
I know, that's what he said.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, one thing I did wanna add from what Jim was talking about is, uh, like you said, most of the installs have been fairly smooth. Uh, there have been a few that areas of town have to have water shut off briefly for the install. Because there isn't, you know, the curb stop isn't working, or, well, cause their curb stop isn't working, or they didn't have a curb stop at all. Uh, so we're finding, we're find, they're finding some unique situations, which doesn't surprise us. And they also have found, uh, a handful of properties without water meters at all. And so it was a very good thing that we're doing this, so the our assumptions of no water meters in some houses is correct.
Yep.
So, just letting you know, they have pots, or have, uh, found some properties and that could explain why they're not submitting a meter read.
Yep.
They don't have a meter, so.
Right now, we're at about twenty-five percent.
About thirty, thirty percent, yeah.
Roughly around that.
Alright.
Okay, we'll, we'll move along here and get back on that. Hopefully here in a couple weeks, get an update and see where we're at. Me and Development Director Brett, what do we got there?
Uh, we are looking at having interview, interview or interviews on September nineteenth.
Okay.
Uh, we were still waiting to hear back from one of the candidates, uh, late last week. And I told the recruiter, if we don't, if they can't get back to her by the end of next, last week. Then we'll remove them from being a candidate, because if they can't respond, then we're not gonna continue with them. Uh, so I, I haven't been able to touch base with the recruiter today, but I have not heard of them responding. If that is the case, we'll have one candidate, uh, that interview will be September nineteenth here at City Hall. I'll get details out to everybody.
Somebody, the other person drop out?
Well, we had, of the three candidates, we had one drop out because they, I got, they were concerned about the pay scale. And they are also did not want their name to be public, and when you're final, final three, once you provide the consent form to acknowledge you're a finalist. Uh, that is public.
Yep.
So, they did not wanna be identified public, which I'll resp, you know, I respect. Uh, so they withdrew from consideration. And we actually had four that we were looking at, another, you know, so two of the four withdrew. Third, third one was not responding. He had significant concerns of the pay. Um, and also their job, current job paid a lot better. And then the last one, they submitted everything, and we're going through the reference check processes, so. We're optimistic to hear back, but we're going to continue through the process. And we'll see what our candidates do. If we do not feel it's the right fit for the can, you know, candidates. If we interview just one person, if we don't feel it's the right fit, we will go back and repost it. We'll go and re, you know, repost it and try.
We'll have to relook at what our, what we're job description is too, then, just to kinda make sure we can maybe cast a wider net here a little bit.
Yeah, so we'll revisit it, but it's gonna be reposted if we don't feel it's the right fit. Uh, of the remaining candidates, so, uh, on paper and from your actions, they are fairly good. So it's hard to tell though on Skype interview, one, you know, roughly an hour interaction. Too much about the person, so, but they would come, come down and do an in-person interview, so, yeah.
Alright. Okay, we'll just hang loose and let us know then, we'll plan for the nineteenth then.
Yeah.
And I'll have details.
And.
See what we got. Alright, engineering project updates, Jim?
Council, we'll run through this quickly. Um, you've approved of all these pay estimates, but we'll just give you a recap quick, so. Um, Lost River, project ninety-five point four percent complete. We'd have a estimate number twelve, which, uh, paid for the work that was done on change order number eight, work to date. That one has a project completion date at the end of September. Uh, Deer Creek Connection, project is ninety-eight point seven percent complete. You approved progressive estimate number six to send tonight. We had a pump startup last week. One of the pumps has a little bit of an issue, so they came up today to look at it and ended up taking it back with them for service. So, the impeller was a little, was loose in there, it was kinda vibrating in the housing, so. They, uh, took that one out of lift, that's out of lift station number eight, that's the one north of the church, that's kind of an important one, so. They're gonna take it back to their shop and evaluate what they can do with that, and if need be, they're gonna provide us with a temporary pump. To bridge the time between a repair can made or a replacement can be done, so.
A warranty, something like that.
Gotta take possession of it before you're worried about a warranty.
Oh, I know, but even so, have you, something like that common?
No, they said that it is very uncommon, so, I believe on the pumps, they have five years. Five-year warranty on the pumps. And they did pull the pumps down Lost River day, take, took a look at those, fully, uh, ran them through their tests. And same thing with number, uh, lift station number six, the retrofit of that. They weren't able to pull the pumps out there, it's still too wet out there yet. But they were able to look through things, and when they come back to deliver the repaired pump, uh, from, um, number eight or the new one. They'll look at the ones from Prairie View at that time, so. Other than that, the system can be operational. Fargo used some of the water that we sent to them, we just tested it with drinking water, just to make sure the system was operational. They calibrated their meter last Tuesday based on flows that were sent with the working pump, so. Um, they did, the city of Fargo did request that, that the city of horse meet with them to kinda. Discuss how the transition is gonna work, so, that just came about last week, so. I'm sure that Jim Houser will reach out to you, or you could reach out to him, however you wanna do that, just to kinda get an idea of the transition period here. Of actually sending them wastewater, so. We talked about the remote water meters. Pedestrian crossing has an eighty-six point seven percent complete. We have approved progressive estimate number, number two. I also have change order number one that I sent out to you, uh, last week, later on in the week, with a memo describing the situation. Uh, basically what it is, is it's a county road, it's based on County Road seventeen. The county looked at the slopes and felt they were too steep for safety or for maintenance. I met with them, we discussed some of the options, and we decided on the best way to move forward was extending three of the four ends of the culvert. And flattening out the slopes, so. I met with the contractor, he understood what we were getting at. We talked about pricing, used unit pricing from the bid wherever we could. And he actually reduced the price on his topsoil from thirty-five dollars a cubic yard to thirty dollars per cubic yard. And that is based on an estimated yard, uh, cubic yard, ninety-six cubic yards is needed. Um, he feels that that's high, but we did need to come to the council with a number to tell you, so. This could be less, but we have to go with these numbers for now based on what we, what we saw, so. Um, I will say that he was reasonable, working with us and explaining to me how he came up with his numbers. And they seem like they're in line with what the work that needs to be done, so.
So we can send that bill to the county right now, and they approve the initial bit?
Well, that's a.
Just saying.
Political thing, so.
I know.
Uh, the county did receive the plans and they did look at them, and how in-depth they look at them is up, is for them, it's, uh.
But then for them to come back and say it's wrong.
Or suggest an option that's, it's.
That stiffs us with the bill is what I'm getting.
It, it does, um, typically a four-to-one slope on a, is, is typical on that, and they, they like six-to-ones, so. This will get it flattened out to the six-to-one slope, so. Um, like I said, I did meet with them and tried to talk through some option stuff with them, and that's kinda where I was told.
Okay, and, and I did bring, just expand, I did bring that up with Jim. Uh, I think for the best interest of the project, just move forward. But it's gonna be brought up a couple more times to the county of, you know, these last-minute changes after the fact being built.
When they've already been reviewed by newer peoples?
Yes, they will, they will be brought up, even though this is, you know, I, I hate to say only roughly fifty-five hundred dollars.
I know.
It's fifty-five hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, it is.
Um, it's gonna be rem, they're gonna be reminded of it a few times.
Okay.
He did hit it off on cost.
It's alright, it gets done right and it looks good, but I'm just saying that was a.
And I will be pleased to report that I used it the other day in a car stop for me.
Alright.
So, they took the opportunity to run me over and didn't. I take that as a win.
Didn't know where you were, huh? Sorry, Jim, sorry, that was too easy, it was a walk-in.
I know, that's alright. So we will need to approve that motion, and the whole works to approve change order number one for pedestrian crossing.
Alright, so we make, I'll make a motion?
Approve, oh, yeah.
Change order number one, every.
A grumpy motion to approve.
Alright, Brandon, is a grumpy motion, can I get a second grumpy motion?
Second.
Okay. Another motion, so, all in favor of change order number one being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, that puts us on to. No, nothing there, there. Let's see, yeah, we'll go to Maple, Maple, uh, Maple Grove, you approved progressive estimate two, the pond project is thirty-three percent complete. Uh, they have indicated that they are still planning to get this done by the completion date, which is the end of the month. And the pond excavation was completed last Friday. That was a bit of a challenge to get all the muck excavation. There was probably a foot and a half, two feet of muck in the bottom of that pond. And they were able to get out and trucked out, so there's a good amount of water in there to put the fountain.
They did their demucking, huh?
They did their demucking, some of it was, uh, you talk about grumpy work, there was some, some grumpy work in there that they were able to do. It was, it was great, you know, good to get it out of there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, like I said, they still plan on having that completed by the end of the month for their, for their, um, completion.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see, so we'll jump down here to Terra Gardens.
Well, wait, before you get too far, they got number eleven, they're waiting for the seal coat. Is he, did he, any idea on a timeframe?
Well, my guess is that they're gonna, the same con, subcontractor is doing Maple that's doing, uh, north and south. So, they're gonna be, and what I've heard on Maple is it'll be the middle of this month, which is right around our completion. It's the, I think it's the twelfth is what they told me in that timeframe, so I'm assuming they're gonna do them both at the same time, cause it's probably two hours of the work.
Right.
It's really minimal, so.
That makes sense.
I haven't got an updated one, uh, scheduled from border states, but I'm putting two and two together.
I mean, that makes perfect sense to come in and do them both, I got it, yeah.
That's typically what they try to do, so.
Was there a change, progressive estimate change for Maple Drive? I saw the document, then. Maple Lane.
Did I?
Change order.
Progressive estimate, was there?
No.
Okay, so. You just had to approve progressive estimate number two.
You did it in the consent.
Oh, okay, alright.
They're just paying the bills for it.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Now the change order.
Right, yeah, no, the only change order I was for the crossing. Okay, so Terra Gardens, they have just stripped the topsoil, basically made a big bathtub, and then the rain came. So, uh, they've been waiting for it to dry. They were able to get one man, uh, one manhole in, the connection to the existing lift station to Prairie View. And they were able to get about, uh, I think it's about thirty feet, thirty feet or forty feet from the lift station out to that first manhole. So, that project has been kinda in a standstill last week, but they were able to get that done. Um, the one thing that I will mention to the council is that Terra Gardens was included in the assessment district for the SSL. They were considered an eighty percent benefit, if I remember right, Lucas, so they partook in the entire cost of the SSL. And all of that, not just a, a certain portion of it, but they part, they took, were able to, we included them in the entire project, so. They are.
Their area was originally included in the.
Yes, it was in the district, yep. It was just a matter of, at the time of the creation of the district, it was one big parcel or two parcels. And now it's all the subdividing, cause the planning had taken place, uh, over the summer, when the project was being constructed, so. They have their share of that project too, so.
Jim, an odd question on that. When Prairie View was put in.
Yep.
They did an upsized lift station to accommodate development to the east, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, but I wasn't involved in the design of that. As part of the SSL project, the pumps that were in there were removed. And newer, and bigger ones were installed with the anticipation of the Terra Gardens and, uh, the Prairie View pushing to the SSL. So, um, the pumps that were constructed with Prairie View at the time in two thousand fifteen are taken out in the shop right now. So, there were improvements made prior or after that construction, so. As far as the upsizing of that, I'm not sure, I guess, that design was done prior to our arrival.
Prairie View was put in to go to the Lefoons open. That's all that, 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 that was approved.
Which makes sense, cause that was.
It was only prior to the SSL.
Yep.
Right.
You were just wondering if the pumps there was.
Well, I just, I've just, I wish I could remember everything from three years ago.
In, in that timeframe, there was discussions about going.
Because the SSL was all in concept at the time.
Concept, right, yeah. So, was it designed that way? I couldn't tell you. Could it have been? Sure, sure could have. But we did have to take out the pumps, put bigger pumps in, and that was basically all that was done. We reconfigured the control panel.
So, when was that done, you said?
The, the new pumps?
Yes.
This summer, as part of the SSL.
As part of the SSL.
And then the panel that was two years old that controlled that lift station was taken back to Sweeney Controls, modified and installed at lift station number eight. Because it was, uh, to do with the phasing, I wanna say, that there was a single phase out there and they. It was so, something, that panel, oh, it was the motor savers, they wouldn't, motor starters, they wouldn't handle the bigger pumps. So that's why that panel went back, got retrofitted, and is now at reused at number eight, and a new panel was installed at number six. That's what it was. It was with the larger pumps, the motor starters and stuff, the old panel couldn't handle it nor could it fit them in, so.
I remember that now.
Yep.
No, just concerned again with where the assessment cost and.
Yep.
Is going and making sure it's all equal.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, sir Jim, you wanna?
Oh, okay, no, no, I'm good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, Brent, you got any general updates?
Always do. Uh, reminder, budget hearing is next, council meeting's September seventeenth. Uh, everybody, hopefully can be there. Uh, it will be likely a very well-attended council meeting. Uh, tax estimates have gone out. If you haven't seen it in the mail yet, you'll probably see it very soon. Uh, our goal, I'm gonna say it one, or now, and then I'll emphasize it. Uh, at the next meeting, is our goal is to keep the mills the same. We're hitting, we're trying to hit a moving target for the mills, because I can't, when submitting our budget, I can't submit. Uh, to them just saying, keep the mills sixty point zero eight, which is what our mills are. I have to give them the actual hard number, so we're going off estimates, so we get, they're typically a month or two behind. I have to give them the actual hard number. So we're going off estimates that we get. They're typically a month or two behind where they're at. So, I took a couple of different state and tax estimates that I've seen. And I looked at how much the appraisal, or their appraisals went up or property values have went up. And it could be different. So like the one I looked, one of them I looked at was, uh, I believe it was a four percent increase on their property values. But, when you do the math and backtrack, they had a four point two five percent. So a quarter percent difference from their appraisal value to what their increase was for the city portion. We're not there to talk about all the other portions or taxing entities. We're focusing on just city. A point two five percent change resulted in not even two dollars. Now, we're going to bring that back when we have a refined number, lower it. We're probably going to shoot a little under the most recent estimate we get from the county. But it's best to be a little high and go down. So, don't worry about the mills. They will go as close to that sixty point zero eight as possible. It'll be either at that or our best attempt to be under it. So I wanna stress that. We're talking about, you know, the one I looked, one of them I looked at there was, uh, roughly seven hundred sixty dollars for the city portion. And that point two five percent came out to be less than two dollars. So that's what we're talking about, for example. I'll gladly talk with anybody about their statement, help them translate it. However, the statements are, or the estimates are very misleading, because if you look at it, you will see on every taxing entity probably, it'll say, increase, 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 increase. And you have to go back and backtrack how they got the increase. But if you look at property valuation for the city, it will be almost, almost nothing for increase. And that's going to be lowered down, like I said. So I wanna stress that too. But we will likely have a very full room at the next council meeting. It's typical. Uh, and I am stressing it at the League of Cities angle. I know a lot of other administrators are not thrilled about how the statements go out. But they tried to simplify how these statements go out. And they oversimplified it to make it to where it doesn't paint the picture at all what's going on.
Remember, they thought they were doing us a favor.
Yes. Uh, and we are, and I am stressing that, like I said, at the League of Cities level. Uh, if I have an opportunity to bend the county commissioners here, I'm gonna bend it, tell them about this. And also even at the state level, I'll, you know, I mentioned that to an individual today saying, hey, you guys need to look at this. Because this is really painting a bad light on all the taxing entities when you're not telling the picture. So, um, just making sure everybody's aware of it. And I, if you're talking about their tax estimate statement there that they got in the mail, please focus on just the city portion. Don't, please don't get in a debate about the school districts amount or the park district or anybody or county. Uh, just focus on city. And also, I highly encourage you, if you do get into that discussion with a resident or anybody, you have the statement in front of you, so you can actually see what it says. So, some residents are going to see a huge increase because their property valuations are changed or have changed. And some will see a, just a marginal one, because their property value didn't change as much. That is the biggest difference for some residents. I heard one res, heard one resident, who we can have, it's a sixty-eight percent increase. But I didn't see their statement. So you have to take it with a grain of salt until you can actually see what they're talking about. So I wanted to stress that to, to the council. In October, uh, we're going to be inviting legislators, local legislators to our council meetings. We're gonna try and coordinate, get them either first or second. I'll see what schedules look like. Uh, but we do wanna engage them. This probably won't be the last time that we bring them. Uh, there are quite a few hot topics in the, that the legislators will be dealing with, uh, in their next session here. So you'll probably see that more often. We'll extend the invite and hopefully they come. And if they don't, we'll make, you know, we'll let you know who we invited and that they couldn't make it or if we heard back from them. Uh, but we're gonna try to engage them more often. And even if we get just a quick update from them of what their priorities are, hey, that helps. Uh, as part of the, like I mentioned earlier with the DC deal, uh, hey, we're, we're Horace and we're here. It's the same thing with our legislators, just at the state level. So just giving council a heads up about that. Uh, North Dakota League of Cities, I've invited our North Dakota League of Cities Executive Director to come to a council meeting. I'm trying to work out a date and when he could come. But mainly introduce himself. Uh, some of you may probably have not met him before. His name is Blake Crosby. And if you have met him, you may not have seen him for a while. So it's a good time to just build that rapport. They are a resource to us and we are going to be using the league more and more and more. We're becoming a bigger player with the League of Cities, uh, with, with me being here. So we're able to use them more to our advantage. You know, they're there as a resource for us. We're gonna make the most of them. Uh, and then the last thing I had was, uh, we're looking at having, uh, our first city administrators meeting of just the Fargo area, Fargo Moorhead area. Uh, we're gonna be meeting tomorrow. And as the city administrators of just the cities on Minnesota and North Coast side of the Fargo Moorhead area. So there's only about five or six of us, uh, between administrators and assistant administrators. So we're gonna meet and start talking about issues that we're facing here and what's going on, how could work with each other and try to meet on a regular basis, maybe once a month or every other month to know what's going on. So, that's something that, exciting to have come forward and we'll be hearing what other communities are doing, so.
That's great. It's good to hear.
Yep. That's all I had.
Okay, good. Alright, so we'll go to portfolio reports. John? Dave? Quiet again? Chelsea?
Dave? Um, so we had, you guys voted on the, um, funds for that up to five thousand. Uh, we are looking at probably about fifteen hundred of that that we would end up using. The sponsors ended up turning out pretty well, so.
Good.
That worked out good. Um.
What is possible, you guys so far, sir?
Well, I'm not sure an exact number, um, but maybe.
I mean, just ballpark, I mean.
Fifteen, maybe, ten to fifteen.
Okay. Is that sponsors and vendors or do you split that group?
We have the vendors. We have about, I think we're gonna be close to thirty vendors. Uh, those spots were twenty-five dollars. We do have two food trucks. Um, I, I was hoping to have three, so I'm still working on the best third one. It's kinda late, but we'll see. So we did use some of the city's money to get a DJ and he will, uh, do the emcee for the parade. He is an, um, retired radio personality, so he's got a pretty fun voice and I think he can, he's gonna be there till seven o'clock that night. So I think that'll bring an element of fun. Brent and I have been talking a lot, working things out. It's been helping me with a lot of stuff. And Brian said that the traffic through the Facebook event has been really awesome.
Yeah, we've had, we've had around twenty-five thousand visits from, not unique visits, but twenty-five thousand track, you know, visitors on our Facebook page, which is like four times the normal traffic we get on our, on our Facebook page. So, we're getting a lot of, a lot of interest from not only people in Horace, but people outside of Horace and, uh, other areas. So, we're, we're getting noticed. We're getting a lot of trap, you know, a lot of recognition that way. So, it's been fun to see, you know, the people and the comments and the interest and volunteers, hey, what are you doing about this? I wanna participate, so that's, that's been fun to see.
The weather actually looks good.
Yeah, um, and I do have some meetings set up already to discuss next year right after. So we'll talk about what worked and what didn't and, um.
Pick a date.
Yep, I think we'll either keep it the same date in September or we'll go back to the old date in August. I think a lot of people like the September date because it'll be, you know, when school's on and a lot of people will be back from the lake and be around, maybe a little cooler, so, we'll see.
Yep, we'll see. We'll get the feedback and see where it goes.
Yeah, we'll get the feedback.
Alright, anything else? Brian?
Just a real quick update. We're gonna be, uh, having a meeting to close up the North Dakota moves, provide the feedback and so forth to the state DOT. Uh, just to let everyone know, uh, what, or let the state know, uh, some of the feedback that residents provided, so. Pretty much just wrapping that up and I, I think everything was success. The success out of the project is, uh, is some of the feedback. We got a lot of feedback from different residents, so that was good on the project.
That was one of the points of the whole thing.
Yeah.
All good?
Yep.
Okay, that's it? Alright, you guys all heard about the White House meeting, so I need to belabor that. Diversion, um, we are currently in a comment period with the DNR. Uh, they are soliciting comments, uh, on their SEI.
SEIS.
Yeah, SEIF proposals. We're looking at how we're gonna, what we're gonna do there. Uh, we've got till twenty-fifth, I believe it is, of September, twenty-seventh of September. Uh, we're gonna have to think about that a little bit more. So, uh, we'll see how that works out. The other thing I did put in on here was that we will be, Brent and I and Brian will be going to a League of Cities meeting here next week, Friday and Saturday. More again, taking some of the conferences, uh, different topics that they have that are of interest to the city. I think that's part of, this is all about. So I'm kinda looking forward to that, especially with follow-up from this White House trip. Uh, some of the people that were there, they're gonna be there and have some follow-up conversations on that. That's it. So, you guys got anything else? Otherwise I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
John, can I get a second? Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're done.